Welcome to the candidates debate for the Wakefield School Committee in the upcoming annual town election on Tuesday, April 27. I'm David Watts Jr. Sitting in for Bill Carroll as the moderator of this debate. This year, there is an unusual situation with the school committee as there will be three races listed on the ballot. There are two open seats for full three-year terms, one open seat for the remaining two years of former member Thomas Flynn, and one open seat for the remaining one year of longtime SC member Christopher Callanan. Two candidates are on the ballot for the two full-term seats, Stephen Ingles and Amy M. Lehman. This evening's debate will feature the candidates for the two contested partial-term seats. Running for the single two-year seat are Kevin Scott Piscadlo and Don Millward. Running for the single one-year seat are Gregory Liakos, Amy Ruhrwein Wall. Posing questions to the candidates are Janet Schuchter, past Chair of the Democratic Town Committee, and former school committee member Anthony Guardia. There are no opening statements in this evening's debate. There are no questions this year from Wakefield voters. We expect to be able to resume that feature in future debates. In turn, a question will be asked of a candidate by one of the panel. That candidate will have two minutes to respond to the question. Following that response, each remaining candidate will have one minute to also respond to the question. To allow for as many questions as possible in the time available while maintaining the ability for all to have a chance to speak, candidates should please keep their answers short and to the point. Questions have not been provided to the candidates in advance. Questions must be relevant to issues important to the town, and questions of a personal nature are not allowed. At the end of the debate, each candidate in turn will have the opportunity to present a two-minute closing statement. Strict compliance to the stated time limits will be observed in order to be able to have as many questions as possible from the panel. The moderator will govern the conduct of the debate at all times. Let us now begin the debate with a question to candidate Kevin Scott Piscadlo by Janet Schuchter.
Do you want to go first? I can switch it up.
Okay. Good evening and thank you. What are your thoughts on the school's overall COVID response? While hindsight is 2020, what would you do differently?
Yeah, thanks, Janet. First, thanks to WCAT for hosting this event. It's always an important thing to have during the campaign, particularly this year when we don't have as many opportunities, traditional opportunities, to get to know people. I do think overall, knowing from my role here at Stonehill College, what it takes in order to be open in-person living and learning in our case. And I think certainly the district has done a good job, knowing what they know at any given time, to be able to provide the space and the opportunity for students to engage in their learning, but in ways that guarantee their ability to be safe to do so. One of the things that we've done very successfully in my work here, I've spent the better part of the past year-plus preparing for and delivering in-person learning here at Stonehill. I've taught in classes, both in-person, hybrid, and remote, and I've learned a lot of lessons along the ways. One thing to answer your question directly that I think has been incredibly significant for me here was the usage of surveillance. It allowed us to get a better sense of what things are going on. It's allowed us an opportunity to quarantine people who maybe have become infected. So one of the things I know that the school department has considered is pool test. And it's something I probably would have encouraged in a little greater form where I'm on the committee, and I know for very good reasons, and certainly under the consultation of the health officials at the school department, decided not going that route. But just my own lived experience over the past year in managing a college campus during a pandemic and supporting students, it's been an important tool to have. Pool testing is a lot easier than the one-on-one testing that we're doing here. I got my 47th test today. I actually just got the results prior to that. But it's been a really critical piece in our arsenal to be able to support in-person living and learning.
Don.
So, thank you again for hosting tonight. With the COVID situation, I think Wakefield has done a very nice job keeping our kids safe and communicating with parents and quarantining and the tracing with all the excellent communication that the nurses have done. I have been myself teaching through this COVID pandemic, and I've seen it firsthand of the impacts that it has been having. The only thing I wish we had done a little differently in Wakefield was the amount of time on learning. I think that the younger kids and their COVID plan of having that half-day at the elementary level was good for the consistency, but I think overall, maybe doing the hybrid for the A, the B day might have worked a little better for having longer days.
10 seconds.
I think as long as we continue to follow the federal and state guidelines and regulations, we'll be able to open up fully and keep everyone safe and get more learning going.
Gregory.
Yeah, thank you, Dave. And let me add my thanks to WCAT, to the panelists, and to the candidates tonight. So, I actually agree with Don in the sense that I think we could have been more thoughtful about the way we framed that question of time on learning. I think especially last spring, there was a lot of uncertainty around what the expectations were for both teachers and students, and I think that that could have been communicated better from the administration. But I also agree with both Kevin and Don that overall, the Wakefield Public Schools have done an extraordinary job in an extraordinary situation, and they deserve all the credit in the world. This is an unprecedented situation that they faced, and they've risen to the task. Thank you.
Amy.
I have to agree with my colleagues here. Wakefield has done an exceptional job, I feel, with the communication, just given two of my kids in school, and the amount of emails and text messages and phone calls that we've received have been really helpful. I would agree that some of the learning time has been a little bit short. I think that that's something that definitely could have changed and maybe been pushed a little bit harder, that especially in the high school level, these kids are trying to go off to college, and they're not getting the time in the classroom, either remote or in-person, that they deserve. I like the idea of the pool testing. I know a few different schools have been doing that, and it seems to be working out really well, so it might be something looking to in the future.
Anthony, a question to Don Millward, please.
No, thank you. And again, I want to repeat, thank you to WCAT for having us. So to follow up on the COVID-19 questions, as we start to see hopefully some sort of normalcy and as our kids head back to school, what are some of your thoughts on the reopening plan? And what would you like to see in place at our schools as our kids return?
I think first and foremost, as our kids return, we need to be well aware of the social-emotional needs that are going to be taking place. We have had children that haven't been in a school building since March that may be coming back. Those children may have some struggle interacting, getting back into the setting appropriately. The other thing that I think we need to make sure is, when we get the kids back in school, I would really like to see the amount of team time decreased. That has been a huge area of concern for myself and many other parents during this COVID-related schedule. I'd like more in-person with teachers. And making sure that the social, the needs of students being met. And, oh my God, I forgot the biggest one. I'm sorry. So, one of the biggest things we need to really start looking at is the impact of the academic learning and the loss that these students have faced. Being a special education teacher, I have seen firsthand how much reading has been lost at the elementary level, which is one of the youngest ages that is detrimental and so important for these kids to start making phonics, phonemic awareness, to propel them into middle school. So we need to come up with a very good plan and interventions and tiered support to make sure that we are effectively closing the academic gap and preparing these students into next year.
10 seconds. All right, Gregory.
Yeah, thank you, Anthony, for the question. And it's not, there's not an easy answer to it. And the reason that there's no easy answer is because, you know, we have 3,400 students, each of whom is an individual learner, right? And one of the core principles of our instructional strategy is individualized student learning. So in a way, we went into this pandemic with a value that helped us, because teachers are focused on the individual needs and learning styles and challenges of their students. So the first principle in the recovery is to do no harm, to make sure that every student has what he or she needs to thrive. And that may mean remote learning or full in-person learning.
10 seconds.
But then, I think we need to pivot to a fuller community support for extended learning time over the summer.
Amy.
Thank you. My thoughts on reopening are basically that we need to make sure we're following all the guidelines, which the schools have been doing, in my opinion, making sure that we're taking all the safety precautions we can and keeping everybody safe. My biggest concern is about the mental health of the kids that are coming back to school. Some of these kids haven't seen their friends in a year, and it's hard for them. I see it with my own daughter, and it's something that we need to make sure we're looking into every aspect of that that we can and get the proper resources, whether that's communicating with our school psychologists, our school nurses, making sure that we're reaching out and everybody feels comfortable with the tools that they have, and if they don't, that we find the correct tools and the correct resources so that we can make everybody feel safe and comfortable.
Thank you. Kevin.
Thank you. So I think one of the first things that we have to focus on, I think, in coming back is probably one of the most basic needs, and that's safety. If you think of the hierarchy of needs, I think the feeling that you're safe, particularly in a pandemic situation, that feels like it's over, but statistics are showing us it's not. Not only the safety of the students, but the safety of the faculty and staff, that we have structures in place to ensure to the best of our ability that they are ready and that they'll be safe in our school buildings. Issues around learning loss, issues around the social-emotional learning, the psychological impacts are all things that I have become very well-versed in over the past year. To create those policies and structures and opportunities to address potentially the gaps in learning that we know and are estimated between 18 and 36 months, there's the basic psychological needs, all the reasons that have been stated, and also to acknowledge that they are going to continue to are remote. How do we continue to have a robust educational experience for those students and families who are going to remain remote for the remainder of the school year?
Thank you. Janet, a question for Gregory Liakos, please.
Thank you. When the school committee steps back to review the lessons learned from the Warrior issue, what do you expect some lessons to be?
Thank you, Janet. Well, there are many. I think the first one is that regardless of your point of view on the Warrior logo, there's a tremendous pride in the community, in its school system, and its history. And there's also a tremendous affection for the history of Native Americans in this community. And I think all of those things are important, they're important values that all of us have to understand regardless of our position on it. And I certainly learned a lot through this conversation. The other lesson, I think, that we learned is that we have to listen. We have to listen to everyone's point of view, and to me, the most important thing is to listen to our young people, our students, and to listen to those voices that have traditionally been marginalized. In this case, it is the voices of our Native American colleagues, our partners. And when imagery, or language, or any action that we take adversely affects those marginalized communities, we have to prioritize their voice in the decisions that we make. So I think those are important things that we learned as a community. And finally, I'd say we also learned that we can, as a school committee, deliberate, we can listen, but ultimately, we can take action, and we can come to a decision and do so in a constructive way.
Thank you. Amy.
Thank you. What I hope people learn when they come out of this, I know it's still raw for a lot of people right now, I hope people learn to be a little bit more compassionate, to really take a look at the whole picture, and make sure that people understand that there are people on all sides of issues, and we have to treat each other like that. It's something that's very important to me about compassion and making sure we listen to everybody, and we give everybody the opportunity in an equal voice. So I hope that that's something that people can take away from it, maybe use it as a learning, a stepping stone to how they go about handling other issues in the future, and, you know, maybe reflect back on it and see what they could have done differently, and hopefully, in the future, do better.
Kevin.
Thank you, Janet. I think there's a couple of things that I think are probably most important and kind of was exposed, I think, during this process. For context, I've been through this twice before. In schools that I've either attended or worked at, I knew, being from Wakefield and being a proud Wakefield Warrior myself, that this was not going to be an easy discussion. I think the vitriol is what took me back. I wasn't expecting the type of environment that has been created across town with former friends and neighbors, and I have each on either side of the issue. There are two lessons I've taken from this. One is the importance of communication. I don't think the communication was always strong enough, whether it's about what is the actual logo that's being discussed, to what the actual process is. And I think we have some good examples on the town council of how members communicate with the community that I would want to employ. The other is trust. I think there's, when there's a lack of trust, I think there's a lot of questions from those in the community. And that's going to be some of the committee's going to have to rebuild, because that's going to be critical as we move on to a high school project.
Thank you. Don.
Being a parent, a teacher, a coach, the biggest thing I took away from this is being a positive role model. And I hate to say this, I think that there was a lot of examples of bad examples that adults set for our younger generation. And we weren't able to come together and talk appropriately about feelings, which is something that is very important nowadays. I think it's okay to have differences. We're allowed to disagree, but we need to do so respectfully, and we are setting the example for our next generation, for our children. And what Wakefield displayed, we are way better than that. I will always be a proud Wakefield Warrior, and I know we did not display that pride that this town has.
Thank you. Anthony, a question for Amy Wall, please.
Thank you. I'd like to follow up on that and ask about the overall role of a school committee in such a specific issue. The Massachusetts Association of School Committees says that a school committee has three jobs: hire and fire the superintendent, set a school-wide budget, and implement policy for the entire district. Do you think the school committee should continue on this trend where they start weighing in on specific school issues, or should they take a much broader approach, as has been recommended?
Thanks, Anthony. I think that they should be focusing on the three main things that you spoke about. There's so much involved in those three things that that's where the focuses need to be, and that's what's important for, we need to make sure that we're giving our kids the best education that they can get, they have all the tools that they need to graduate and be successful in the future. When we start picking off other ideas, and I'm not saying that they're not important by any means, but I think that there's other ways to go about those issues, definitely maybe bring them on the forefront, but find a way to work as a community to solve those issues. But the main focus should be on the three pillars that you mentioned.
Thank you. Kevin.
Thank you, Anthony. I think one of the things that is often confused by a lot of people is the role of the school committee, and you captured it well. It took even me some time, I think, when I had served my two terms, to kind of really understand what the proper role is of the school committee. And undoubtedly, this issue is an important one. It brings up a lot of emotions for people, particularly those of us that are proud of it. But at the same time, I think it's really important to bound what it is, what our role is. We've never decided a logo before. We didn't approve the Greenwood Gators or the Doyle Ducklings, and I don't think that it necessarily was something that the school committee had to take on. But certainly, it's an issue that was important. It motivated people to run for office. It was a significant thing that I think took over, and it's really been a distraction. We need to return to those things that we're talking about, preparing our students to come back in a way that's only going to be a couple of weeks after this school committee is elected.
Thank you. Don.
So the school committee has to look out for the children, their education. What role does the Warrior and the logo have to do with providing a better education for our students? It really doesn't. I don't think that this was a great time to even be taking on this topic, considering we're in the middle of COVID. We have children that are suffering from social-emotional needs, learning losses, trying to get our students back into a building for education. I think a lot of time was used and expelled on an issue that really is important, but maybe not the appropriate time and for the school committee to have to decide upon. So I think we need to stick to those three pillars, and this probably was not one of them that had to be taken under account right now.
Gregory.
Thank you. Yeah, it's a good question. We had to take it up as a school committee because it was an issue of civil rights for students, especially students of Native American ancestry, of whom we have some. And it was brought to us by the youth council, and if we're serious about engaging youth voice and encouraging civic engagement from young people, you know, we have to be serious about responding to their recommendations. And I'm a little bit surprised to hear Amy and Don both say that we shouldn't have been tackling this, because both of them supported putting this issue on a town ballot, essentially extending and amplifying this whole conversation and forcing the school committee to spend more time on it. So I would have liked to have spent less time on it myself. Unfortunately, that wasn't the case.
Janet, a question for Kevin Piscadlo, please.
Thank you. What is your vision for the 21st century high school?
Yeah, thank you, Janet. It's something I'm very excited about, having been a part of the Galvin process and hoping to bring that experience into this race, or into this experience if I earn the seat on the school committee. I'm really looking forward to that aspect. We know so much today about how students learn. My scholarship and my research, Janet, is on learner-centered teaching, so methodologies for how to think differently about how we teach. We know more, again, about how people learn, yet as David Driscoll once said, if Horace Mann were to walk into the average class, it wouldn't look radically different to him in the average class. So I think we have to think about how can we create spaces and leverage this opportunity to create flexible spaces, learner-centered classrooms, top-notch technology that meets the needs not only now, but the needs that'll be forthcoming, appropriate performance space, sports space, labs and sciences. The stems are incredibly important areas of study, and we owe it to the current students, particularly those coming from the Galvin, which was such a wonderful project, such a great building, has achieved everything we were hoping it was going to achieve when we were going through the eight different modules to create it. But here's an opportunity to take that next step. We talked a lot when I was on the school committee, going from good to great. And I think this is one of those next steps, to start to work even further along the way to greatness. This is an opportunity to invest, to invest in education in our town, and to better prepare students for college, for work, for career, for military, whatever it is that their path is going to follow, by, again, creating those spaces that meet the way that we should be looking at education today, by focusing on learning, not so much how they're instructed.
Don.
So I'm really looking forward to a new high school. I wish we were further along in the process of a new high school, because I was really hoping my two kids were going to be able to use a new high school in a few years. However, I don't want to take Kevin's answers, but he has a lot of the same things I wanted to say. I've been to many schools, the gyms, the arts, the theaters, how they're using spaces are state-of-the-art, and I think we need to do that, and our kids deserve that. How we use technology nowadays, there's just so many new infrastructures that can be put into a school that I would like to see when our new school is eventually built, that our younger kids will get to use. So the theaters, the arts, how everyone learns should all be taken into consideration.
Gregory.
Yeah, thank you. I think the creation of a new Wakefield Memorial High School is a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity for this community, and you only have to see the impact that the new Galvin has had, both on learning in Wakefield and also on the confidence that this community has developed around its capacity to deliver top-quality education. And so we have to be really thoughtful, and we have to engage with the best thinkers around educational spaces in the 21st century. And I think fundamentally, that calls for spaces that create learning environments for kids that are modeled on collaboration and modeled on group learning.
10 seconds.
And the kind of learning that enriches kids' lives, not just in the classroom, but throughout their academic careers and professional lives. So I think we have a real opportunity, a unique opportunity with the new high school.
Amy.
I can't wait to have a new high school. I think that this is something that we've been looking forward to. I think it's something that we need to make sure that we're taking every appropriate step, and we're looking at every aspect of this that we can. We don't want to just build something to build it. We need to make sure the technology is there, that we have everything in place for these kids when they go off to college or to start their careers. They need to have all the tools that they can. We need to be able to compete with towns that are already in the situation where they have the technology that they need. And when these kids go head-to-head to get into a college or get out into the work field, we need to make sure that it's a fair playing ground. When they come from the Galvin and then go to the high school, in my opinion, it's a drastic drop in the experience that they're having. So we need to make sure that we're listening. What do the kids need? What do the teachers need?
10 seconds.
We have to listen to all the voices that are involved and not just a few people that want to have their own opinion. and not just a few people that want to have their own opinion.
Anthony, we're going to do one-minute responses for each as time is getting short. So you have a question for Don Millward, please.
No, thank you. And Janet, thank you for giving the great questions that allow me to follow up. So to follow up on the high school, I think everybody wants a new high school. Would you be willing to support either a debt exclusion, an override, or some sort of tax increase to build the new high school? And if not, how would you, how would you try to fund that building?
Well, considering I have two kids that are going to hopefully use a high school, I'm 100% for building a high school and paying more taxes. I'm a proud Wakefield resident. There's kids that are going to be coming up that are younger than my kids. I think we owe it to this town that a new high school is built. We're one of the last high schools, I think, us, Stoneham, that need either a brand-new high school or a complete renovation at this point. So I think investing in our community, investing in our town, our schools should be the top priority. I'm not opposed to paying for that out of taxes. I think it makes our, our community more valuable by having a top-notch school and education.
Gregory?
Money, wealth.
Oh, sorry. Gregory?
Yeah, thanks. I would certainly support a debt exclusion, which is the vehicle that we use to finance the Galvin. And I think it's important for the public to know that we are in a process with the Massachusetts School Building Authority through which the state will finance a significant portion of the creation of a new Wakefield High School. But of course, that process requires us to make a local investment. And I think the debt exclusion will be the, the right vehicle for that, the most effective and, and cost-effective vehicle. And remember, it's, we're going to be retiring debt on the Woodville and Dolbear schools, I think, within, if not this year, very soon. So that frees us up as a community to be able to finance
Ten seconds.
a long-term debt for the high school. And it is an investment in the community's future and in its long-term health and prosperity.
Amy?
As much as I never want to see taxes raised, I think that in certain instances, there's things that we need as a community. Like Rick had said, with the, with the schools coming off of, with being done paying for them pretty soon, we're going to have those funds available to us. So hopefully, it's not going to be as high as people think it's going to be. And we're going to have the funding and the grants and things that we need to make this happen. And it's not going to be a huge impact on the community. But again, it is something that we need to make our community more inviteable to people to come in and getting kids out there into the, into the world, the workforce, having the tools they need.
Thank you. And Kevin?
I think the experience and the lessons learned going through the Galvin process has made me really excited, but also knowledgeable about the steps. We're in step three of eight. And if you think back to what Doran Whitaker said, you know, "We're looking at anywhere between $74 million to well over $100 million", depending upon renovation versus sale. He'd say new, but I think the option to renovate could be there. I'm certainly open for each. And the process is a great one that allows you to make those determinations, both with your construction professionals as well as with the community. One of the things that was critical was the opportunity to educate. Now, I have young nephews that are hopefully going to be in this building, but no skin in the game myself. But it's something that we do need to invest in. I believe in education. But we do need to be sensitive to taxpayers. We not only have the Galvin still on the books. We have a vote coming on with no knowledge of how much that is going to be. So it's all about education and building the trust I talked about in one of the first questions. I think I was a part of that process, would like to be a part of this.
Thank you. And we'll go to closing statements now. We'll start off with Kevin Scott Piscadlo.
You took me by surprise here. So I see one minute on the screen, but we have two minutes, right?
Two minutes.
All right. First, thank you to WCAT. This was a great opportunity. The two terms I spent on the school committee were sound decision-making, a record of balancing school and town, always advocating. I look back on the six years with great memories. We practiced strong financial management during the crippling recession. We created new revenue sources, we cooperatively with people unions, and we worked to build Alvin Mills. I was frequently chosen by my colleagues to assume leadership positions on and on behalf of the school committee while simultaneously taking on town-wide leadership. I did not anticipate joining the committee until the pandemic came about. It upended all of our lives. I saw the impact that it was having on students and worried about my own nephew. How are we going to be prepared? And what is that I can bring to the table in my past experiences, my role at Stonehill College, my role as a teacher, and certainly the time that I spent on the school committee? With four of seven school committee seats up for election, I thought that it was important to once again raise my hand and offer the same to my own mother. The two-year seat provided just enough time to influence the issues I care most about, the safe return to learning, addressing learning loss, ensuring social and emotional need, supporting faculty and staff, and moving forward with the high school project. I have meaningful experiences in all of those areas and look forward to seeing how I will be able to contribute those and leverage those in the time that I'm allowed in. We know that there are two uncontested three-year seats, as David talked about, with two great new members joining the committee. I humbly suggest that you consider pairing them with an experienced improvement.
Ten seconds.
The election will take place only weeks after we will have returned to school. The issues are really critical and the experience is really important. I humbly respect and ask for your vote for the two-year seat on the Wakefield committee. Thank you.
Thank you. Don Millward, please.
Thank you for this opportunity tonight. First off, I would like to thank my family and friends who have supported me through the entirety of my campaign so far and to the many new people that I have met along the way. I have to say, seeing all of my signs around town is pretty invigorating and a pretty good feeling. I honestly did not know what to expect when running for a public office, as I have never done this before. I know that I may not be the most polished candidate running, but I can assure you one thing. My number one priority is helping to provide the children of Wakefield with the best education possible. And I have no doubt that I am more than qualified for this important job. I bring vast experience and knowledge to the table. I currently and proudly hold the roles of both a special education teacher and a parent. So I have firsthand knowledge and experience. And I am familiar with the challenges that both teachers and parents face when it comes to education and the impact and the decisions of the, that the school committee makes on them. As a parent of two Galvin students, I am fully invested in the education on not only my children, but every child in this community. It is essential that we provide them with the best opportunity to thrive. As a special education teacher, for the past 17 years, I have extensive knowledge of the process, the importance of special education, and how implementing a strong curriculum in general education with appropriate intervention strengthens special education. Over the past year, I've been on the front line of COVID, teaching both online and in person, and have observed firsthand the extensive impact the pandemic has caused. So when people ask me why they should give me their vote, my response is, I'm dedicated to the town of Wakefield. I have drive and passion to work tirelessly. I'm invested. I have two children. I'm knowledgeable and I'm open-minded. I didn't decide to run for school committee for a political agenda, but only for a personal agenda, to make sure my children and all of the children of this community have access to a top-notch education they deserve.
Gregory Liakos, please.
Thank you, David, and thanks again to WCAT and to Janet and Anthony and my fellow candidates. This school year has been unlike anything our students, educators, and staff have ever experienced. The COVID-19 pandemic has upended our lives, stressed our families, and put enormous pressure on our students and their teachers. Thankfully, our community has rallied, supporting its schools with additional resources and personnel. This week, our elementary school students returned to classrooms full-time with middle school and high school students to follow over the next few weeks. The next months, though, are critical. We need to assure teachers and support staff that they will have all the materials and guidance they need to do their jobs. We must help schools recover from the pandemic by supporting the mental health, social, and emotional needs of our students and faculty. The hard work of improving our public schools will not end with the waning of the pandemic. We must improve services for students with disabilities, strengthen early literacy and science education. And we must build a new Wakefield Memorial High School that meets the needs of our next generation of students. I am committed to achieving these goals. Wakefield is a wonderful community, filled with dedicated, civically-minded residents, businesses, and nonprofit leaders. This community values and supports public education. We need a redoubling of that commitment to navigate our way out of the pandemic and back to normal school life. I ask Wakefield voters to elect me to a one-year term in the school committee to help lead that effort on behalf of our students, teachers, and families. Thank you.
Thank you. Amy Ruwine Wall, please.
Thank you. Never before have our children faced such difficult challenges. The ongoing pandemic has caused unprecedented impacts on their daily lives, from in-class learning to social activities, from athletics and exercise to creative outlets such as music, art, and drama. There isn't one aspect of their lives that hasn't been uprooted. If I'm elected, my primary focus will be on the safe reopening of our schools for full-time, in-person learning and the commencement of a path to normalcy. This will also include more access to mental health resources so our children who need assistance can begin the process of healing. Furthermore, we need to work together to slow the drastic rise of youth vaping and drug use. These are issues I take very seriously, and more effort needs to be made to stop this epidemic. Lastly, it is incredibly important that we have faith in our public dollars, that our public dollars are not only safeguarded, but utilized appropriately. If elected, I will ensure our dollars will be wisely spent to aid, excuse me, wisely spent to aid our students in a manner that sets them up for success. Just like my mother, I have always been an engaged resident of Wakefield. From my early days of working at her store, Luby's Jewelry, to participating in town functions, I have been an active participant in our community. Importantly, through my experience as a member of the zoning board, I have learned both process and procedure and will be able to tap into that experience while serving on the school committee. I was born and raised here in Wakefield, and I have two daughters enrolled in the Wakefield Public School System. I remain invested in this community that I love, as I plan to stay here for many years. Should anyone have any questions or concerns they wish to raise with, raise with me, please don't hesitate to reach out. Your thoughts will always be heard. And I respectfully ask for your vote on April 27th. Thank you.
And with that, we have come to the end of the debate for the two contested partial-term seats on the school committee. Thank you, candidates, for your participation this evening, and thank you for dealing with the technology. Hopefully, next year, we'll all be back in the studio together. Remember that this year, there are three distinct school committee races on the ballot. Two candidates are standing for the two full-term, three-year seats, Stephen Ingles and Amy M. Lehman. Two candidates are standing for the single-two-year partial term, Kevin Scott Piscadlo and Don Millward. And two candidates for the single-one-year partial term, Gregory Liakos and Amy Ruwine Wall. Our thanks go to the debate questioners Janet Schuchter and Anthony Guardia. And now, it's up to you, the voters. Exercise your right to decide who will govern town affairs by voting on Tuesday, April 27th. Finally, join us on Saturday, May 8th, at 8:00 a.m. for annual town meeting at the Wakefield Memorial High School Field House. Alternative seating will be available under a tent in the adjoining parking area. For those in our audience viewing online, the upcoming town council debate will be on a different link. Thank you for joining us this evening. Good night.